Yes, sir.
Is, um, that's, that's gonna be here tonight? We know? Around you, pal.
Is everybody on? Was it just me that was dropped?
I think so. Um, is Council Noon coming to you now?
Uh, no. He is, um, for the week, he's going to be, um, tied up with the temple. You know, when I saw him at the wake, he was, um, I think he's, he's mugged for the week. He's how it was explained to me.
All right, I got, I've got everybody here around you, just so we're kind of clear on it. Um, when you want to open up to the public, I got some people from the public that will lend into the meeting at that time when you indicate so. I have one person here I don't recognize. C two. There's no name on it, but I don't know where it went. C one oh two four nine, I, I don't, I don't know who that is.
I'm. I'm down. Two or something like.
You're, you're breaking up, I couldn't understand you. Lost you. Yeah, we'll keep them in the waiting room till they identify themselves. I think we lost Rodney again.
Okay, I'm back, John, so.
All right.
Um, if I get, if I get dropped, why don't we proceed with that? Bad communication. You can just take the meeting over so we can.
Ready for roll? Roll call?
Ready for, for roll call?
All right, Chairman Elliott. Council Noon. Council Chow.
Present.
Two present.
Well, Paul. There. So this is a meeting of the zoning subcommittee to take up a motion by Council Rourke and Council Noon relative to expand additional. Go to you first. Why don't we go to you, Madam Manager? I think I'm in an area that has bad wifi, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor, and Mr. Chairman, and members of the council and the subcommittee. So the, uh, the motion filed by Councilors Noon and Rourke asked for, uh, a, a presentation regarding zoning and how, uh, as we understood it, what types of efforts could be made to increase housing. Uh, I, I guess I'd let the maker of the motion speak to it, but, um, Mr. Sligle is here, as well as, uh, Jared Als to, uh, talk to the council, present a, a number of different scenarios that have, um, either been considered by the council at other times or may be considered. But the focus was on, uh, housing and making more affordable housing available through different manner and means, uh, through zoning and, and using zoning as a tool. So, uh, with your permission, um, I don't know whether the maker of the motion wanted to speak first, but I would turn it over to Mr. Sligle and Mr. Als to, um, uh, make a presentation and then to the council.
I think that makes sense. Council Rourke, did you want to, um?
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Chairman. Quickly, um, you're looking forward to the presentation. I know that this is something that the manager, uh, in, uh, DPD has been working on for, for some time now. So I think as a council, as a subcommittee first, then as a council as a whole, I look forward to hearing the ideas, um, giving our ideas as well, and hopefully come up with a, a plan that, that helps everybody in the city. Thank you, Madam Manager.
Okay, why don't we go to the presentation? I agree, Madam Manager, unless, uh, members of the subcommittee, Council Chow, Council Mercy, Council Drinkwater, anything to add before we, um, hear the presentation?
I, I do not. It, it is good motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for calling this meeting. I look forward to hearing the presentation as well.
Okay. Council Mercy and Council Drinkwater, all set? Okay. All right, let us proceed.
Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the subcommittee, uh, council members, thank you very much for, for having us this evening. Uh, as the manager mentioned, we're here, uh, because of a motion by Councilor Rourke and Noon, um, to review our zoning to see if there was a, a way to, through zoning measures, to try to increase housing across the city. As the council is no doubt aware, um, there is a housing crisis in Massachusetts and the Northeast as a whole, um, and there are a lot of different options, um, via zoning to try to increase housing. Um, and we are, uh, at this point in time, uh, in DPD, working on kind of a, a more comprehensive report with proposals and implementation strategies on the, kind of, a, a larger, uh, view of housing. I, I think it is kind of instructive if we talked a little bit about the things that have happened in the city in the past. Uh, kind of the most recent, uh, time when this issue came up before the council was, um, a few years ago, uh, when Council Rourke made a motion to, um, uh, add an accessory dwelling unit or in-law apartment, uh, availability in single-family districts in the city. So we came up with a fairly conservative proposal that would allow for, would have allowed for, uh, accessory dwelling units to be inhabited by family members, um, uh, across the single-family zones in the city. It would have required bonding and, uh, regular permitting and certification by the owner occupied, uh, single-family owners that the members residing in those, uh, accessory dwelling units were indeed family. That did not make it through the subcommittee process and never saw the, a, a full council vote for that proposal. Prior to that, there have actually been, um, uh, kind of a zoning changes that made it slightly more difficult to put housing around the city, and I think that the council, uh, had very legitimate, you know, uh, important reasons for making those zoning changes at the time. They, uh, and, and some of those things are reflected in the general categories that we've looked at, um, that we'll be presenting. Um, and, and, uh, some are, are, are things that we would propose even changing this, this point in time. I wanted to talk a little bit about, uh, things that are happening kind of on a more national scale. Uh, if folks have been paying, paying attention to the news, they may have noticed some of these things, uh, happening. But for instance, uh, last week in Portland, Oregon, um, the, uh, city council passed an ordinance allowing up to four units on every residential property in the city. And if you included affordable housing in your, uh, proposal, you could get up to six units on every, um, on every housing lot in the city. Recently, in the, in the past couple, I think it's the past year, year and a half or so, Minneapolis, um, passed a zoning ordinance that allowed three-family houses on every residential lot in Minneapolis in an effort to try to provide additional housing. These are other places where they're, they're suffering from a shortage of housing. So there are several different categories that I think that we can talk about, uh, kind of in general, that would allow for increased housing in Lowell. And these, these are not coming with, um, specific language or proposals at this time. That will be a part of a larger report once we get some feedback from the subcommittee and from the public. But I did want to give you some, some general ways that, that, uh, we as a, as a staff have kind of thought of to increase housing. The first would be, uh, uh, rezoning different sections of the city. Currently, um, uh, two-thirds of the residential land in Lowell is zoned for single-family only. And so, um, a rezoning of, of areas of the city to allow for more two families or more three families. Two families in districts that only allow single families and three families in districts that only allow two families right now would allow for greater density in the city. Again, not suggesting this is a proposal, but it is a possible avenue that the city could take to increase housing. Another, uh, kind of general change that could be made would be to adjust the dimensional requirements. Those would be things like lot sizes, setbacks, um, uh, which are the kind of very basic dimensional requirements to some more esoteric dimensional requirements, like floor area ratio, which, uh, kind of, uh, governs how large a structure can be put on a lot, or, um, a lot area per dwelling unit, which, which, um, typically means that the, the more units you want to put on a lot, the larger the lot has to be. Those could be adjusted to allow for lots that currently wouldn't allow multifamilies to allow them. It's important to note that in Lowell right now, a lot of the existing residential housing stock is what we call pre-existing non-conformant, which means that it is built on lots that you couldn't build a house on today. So, um, uh, for instance, um, in, uh, some of the suburban single-family neighborhoods where you require 10,000 square feet to put a single family, there are many, many houses that have less than 10,000 square feet. And a determination was made in the past to zone those areas to 10,000 square feet to prevent a lot of infill development. But you've basically made it impossible for people to build the kind of housing that already exists in these neighborhoods. So changing the zoning to better reflect the actual, um, neighborhood character, instead of, uh, kind of upzoning to prevent infill would be a way to increase housing. Uh, another, um, kind of way to increase housing would be, um, through amendments to our table of uses in the zoning law. Uh, our zoning ordinance, uh, requires, uh, in a lot of different zones, multifamilies to get special permits, which means they have to go before the planning board. And reducing that requirement for, uh, housing of a particular size, say, five-family or less, or four-family or less, uh, would, uh, eliminate a hurdle to putting in multifamily housing in some of these zones, where it would otherwise be allowed. Other things in the table of uses, um, uh, would be things like, uh, allowing more mixed use, mixed-use residential in different zones, so that would be basically encouraging the, some of the more classic commercial on the ground floor, mixed-use resident, residential above, um, that was typical of housing styles for a while in the United States, some traditionally housing styles, but is falling out of favor and is, is not allowed in some of the zones in the city. So allowing that could perhaps encourage both the commercial use and the residential use on a lot that now doesn't allow both. Another general, uh, category of things to do would be, um, uh, create some, some new ordinances. Some of those are, would be reflected in, uh, things that are in the governor's, um, Housing Choice Initiative bill. So things like accessory dwelling units, which would allow for single-family residences to add an accessory dwelling unit. A lot of those proposals limit the size of that unit. Some of those proposals limit, uh, that, that unit to only being, uh, inhabited by, uh, family members, so there'd be in-law apartments in effect. But that would be one way to try to incorporate, um, uh, some more housing stock into the city. Uh, another way via a new ordinance would be something called inclusionary zoning. This is something that many municipalities in the, in Massachusetts do, which is, uh, to, uh, both require that projects of a certain size have a certain percentage of income-restricted units and allow for greater density with more income-restricted units. That would be providing, uh, additional housing for, um, your workforce-level housing, um, in new projects, either by mandate or by allowing a density bonus or both. So if you didn't include these units, you could build X number of units, but if you included income-restricted units, you could build X plus five and include income-restricted units, allowing for greater density and providing an economic incentive to develop to create these units by allowing more units than would be otherwise. Again, that is a widely-used tactic across the Commonwealth, including in the city of Boston, um, that has inclusionary zoning. Another, uh, possibility would be, um, creating some sort of, uh, method by which currently, uh, existing units that were created, um, without the benefit of permits, would, would be able to be made legal if they had been around for a certain period of time. This is not something that, that, uh, has. This is not something that is necessarily we, we would advocate for, but it's something that certainly comes up. And I've heard from many, many counselors over the years with concerns about individuals who bought a house that they thought was a three-family and then found out later that the old owner had built that third unit without a permit. And they're in a quandary with their lender and unable to sell because of. So there are, 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 those are possible new ordinances that could, that could, um, uh, allow for greater legal housing in the city. Uh, there are other, uh, things that could be revised in the ordinance. One that comes up a lot is the, um, uh, the definition of family, which is no more than three unrelated people. That was changed. It used to be in Lowell, it used to be no more than four. It has been changed to no more than three, which is a more restrictive change. Many, um, places in the Commonwealth have no more than five or no more than six as their definition of family. And in a, uh, in a, um, a city with a large immigrant population, a gateway city like Lowell, uh, that might be more reflective of the realities, as a college town like Lowell is, more reflective of the realities of people's living situations in the current no more than three unrelated people, uh, might be. There are some other kind of, uh, creative, but, uh, more, uh, more targeted changes to allow conversion of very, very large structures into multifamilies regardless of the district. So, uh, things like abandoned churches, um, uh, there are some extremely large, uh, houses across the city that are not, no longer appropriate for single-family dwellings, uh, the, the way they're currently constituted, and to provide a pathway to allow those houses to be turned into multifamily in a thoughtful process would be a way to create more housing. So those are, um, just some kind of general ideas that the city has, that, that the, that the planning staff has. There are others that are more, more minor, and, and, and I, I think it's important for us to talk about kind of what the thought process is from the subcommittee, um, about what they would like to see and, and from the public as to what they would like to see to try to increase this housing stock and how they feel like the city should, what directions you feel like the city should take. The, the plan would be to hopefully, um, have this matter continue to another subcommittee meeting at which we would present a, a report based on the feedback that we get tonight. Jared and his team have been working very hard on, on, um, coming up with the, kind of a very detailed report. And so, um, the idea would be to take in both the ideas of, of the planning staff and, and DPD as a whole, along with the feedback from the city council and the public, to come up with a document that would have some more detailed proposals and ideas that the subcommittee could, could then further act.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Sligle. Um, I do know, um, that we have some members of the public that have joined us and have been on the line. So, um, did you have anything else? Jared, did you want to add anything? Or, um, maybe we could get these speakers in if you don't mind, and then I'll, I'll go to you, Jared, and for further discussion. Maybe something Mrs. Sligle said, then we'll go to members of the subcommittee and members of the city council, if that's okay. Okay. So, Mr. Clark, um, I know you have, uh, some individuals who have been patiently waiting.
I have. I have one, Mr. Chairman. I, one I recognize that has registered with me. The other one, I don't recognize the name. I'll, I'll let the one that, that, that I have recognized and signed up for, I'm gonna admit her right now.
Okay, sounds good.
I just admitted one, but two got it, so.
That's fine. Ms. Ford, Jim, did you want to turn on your, um, your video? Okay, we, we see the. Just need the video.
Yeah, it looks like she's muted too, I can unmute. I can. Yeah, it's not, um. Yeah, she's on, I see her, I see her name, but I don't know what the situation is.
Yep, she's on now.
Ah, there you go. Hey, there.
Okay, Deb, why don't we, uh, why don't we go right to you?
Well, actually, um, so, one of the reasons. Yeah. So, one of the reasons. This is all new to a lot of us, is being included and, um, to be included in this manner, so this is good. We are here to hear what the subcommittee is proposing so that we also can hear what it is you're trying to accomplish, because I think you need to go to the neighborhoods to find out what are their challenges. When you talk about not enough housing, I'm not clear on what that really means. When you say that there isn't enough housing, what are we talking about? Who's being denied housing? Who's being denied housing?
Okay, why don't we? You want to go to the maker of the motion or? Now Councilor Noon has postponed this motion and we did delay this meeting last week and I was not aware it was going to be, not he was still going to be mourning his mother this week. But Councilor Rock, did you want to jump in and maybe?
Yeah, I think the reason, I know my reasons for applying the motion along with, with Councilor Noon is obviously the, the costs of not only buying a home in the city, but rentals now are, are, are high, which is both a good and bad thing for a city such as Lowell. We are welcoming to all and having conversations with not just Councilor Noon, but, but other people. How do we have a, a family that lives here now that wants to raise their family here, that, that wants to remain in the city? Whether you be a young professional, just married, you know, fresh out of college and, and you have a new job. So how are there ways where in the city where maybe you have to rent for a couple of years, save up and, and buy a home? I, I think that, you know, a motion like this is, is all encompassing. I, some of the things that was Slagle talking about, I, I did like some of them, you know, I may disagree with. But as far as, you know, when a builder will be building, you know, apartments or condos, the, the possibility of, you know, a, a more affordable portion of the construction, I think is beneficial for the city. And I, I think that, you know, one of the things that the council as a whole, you know, should strive for, again, is to have people come here, to live here, to work here and to want to raise a family. And I think that's probably one of the main reasons that I thought of filing the motion.
Well, if I could weigh in, so I hear increasing homeownership, which is different than people being denied housing. So I think we need to establish who is being denied housing. Where are we getting our data from that people don't have housing? Or are? That's, I think the, the main thing is we need to find out as a city, who's saying that they can't get housing? Where is, where are those people? Do we have a list? What are their needs? And are we going to meet them? I think you have to find out what the needs are for the people that are saying they can't get homes or they can't find a place to live before you can make any changes. To make blanket changes without that data, I think that it's doing the service to the city to be more. There is a difference between someone in homeownership, their challenges, and someone who can't get a leg up to get an apartment or a leg up to get a place where they could have more than three of their children, be able to have a yard. I think, and also professionals wanting to co-house or be co-occupants. So I think we need to find out as a city, who are these people? What are their needs?
Yeah, so I'll give you, I'll give you an example. I'll take myself. You know, I graduated from, from UMass Lowell. I would not have been able to stay in the city if I did not have two other graduates from the university that we got an apartment together, right? You know, we were not related, but we all had jobs. We are, I guess you could, you know, we're still as young professionals at the time. You know, and we did that for, you know, maybe a year and a half, two years. And slowly, I think as, as a goal would be is, you know, you, you move on and you buy a single family home, which fortunately, you know, my wife and I were able to do, and then we bought our forever home that we have now. So, you know, I use myself as an example on, on that, Deb. And, you know, I would hope that that would be, you know, a template that Eric and the DPD can use, you know, going, going forward.
I think there needs to be more in-depth data in the city as a whole, the size that we are. Where are we falling short? Is it people cannot get apartments for their family? And once they do, do we have a path for homeownership for them? Or are we a stepping stone for professionals that feel that they can't make the step into homeownership? Let's work with them. So I think knowing where, where we have the greatest needs, identifying it as a city, who are the people that need help in what areas? And I don't think we have that data.
First, so if, if I may, I do know that there was an organization in the city, the Merrimack Valley Partnership, a project. Perhaps, you know, Mrs. Slagle or Madam Manager, that would be a good start. Because I know that they do sponsor classes or maybe some other organizations that'd be able to provide information, your thoughts, Madam Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And we can certainly, a, a, as I think has been alluded to, this is a much broader conversation for, you know, the, the council and through the subcommittee. These were some ideas trying to respond to what are some of the tools. But as always, there is a balancing act between the need for affordable housing and also density and other issues in the neighborhood. So I think the suggestion, obviously, that we need to hear from the people, we need to hear from the neighborhoods is, is a, a good one. But also entities like the Merrimack Valley Housing Partnership or those who are working, you know, on the front lines with people in and around housing issues, I think is another avenue that we could present at future subcommittees as well.
No, I, I agree, Madam Manager. I think, I think it's important to go out to the neighborhoods and solicit concerns, particularly if we're talking about changing table of uses and, you know, amending zoning districts. I'm not so sure I'm, I'm in support of that. I, I think the zoning as presented in the city as it exists. I think we, we do a good job in, in providing housing to various economic levels. But I do think that makes some sense. I like this suggestion from, you know, Mrs. Slagle that the present, you know, a presentation be made with options, perhaps after meeting with neighborhood groups and speaking with housing partners in the city. Before that, I did say I was going to go to Mr. Els. Jared, do you want to, do you want to? I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Ford, Jim, you all set? You have some more questions or comments or?
I don't think John Hamlet's on.
Okay, Mr. Hamlet, are you on? Or Mr. Gary, is he going to?
I haven't, I didn't get a request to send, I, I sent, the email request I sent to the Zoom request was from a Ms. Thai and from Ms. Borgione.
Okay, so we're all getting schooled in how to Zoom. So let me ask some of, a question from him if I can. So I think what we would like to know as a city, where are we getting the data of people that are being shut out from housing? It, it's a kind of uncomfortable to us that we feel, where are we with that? How do we know? And where are they now? So if we have people you're saying that can't get housing, where are they? Are they, like, what does the city do? Where are we getting this information that we know that we need to increase it? And what can we do now, especially during the pandemic, if people feel that they have no place to live?
Mr. Chairman. Can I, can I address, can I address that? I, I, I think it's a, a good question and I personally, I appreciate the, the motion for this, the, the topic of the subcommittee and also the information brought forward by Mr. Slagle. And, and it's a good question. And I brought forward a, a motion earlier this year relative to housing production. Because I think like a lot of communities throughout the state, we have a little bit of supply and a demand problem that's really contributing to the cost of housing. And the statistics show that about a quarter of the residents in the city are actually paying half of their total income towards housing. And, and that is way more than is recommended any family should be spending on housing. So the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, as they do for a lot of communities, has studied how much housing production is needed to keep up with future demand. So that prices, you know, can at least level off and not keep going up, you know, really pressing families economically. For the community of Lowell, they recommend that we would be producing about 300 new units of housing per year just to keep up with demand. Earlier this year, a report came back that, you know, despite a lot of the efforts to approve housing in some of the restrictions related to zoning, in 2019, we only approved 44. In other years, that may be more. We have the wind developments coming on, but it just supposed to show how difficult it is to keep up with demand for housing in the community. And I appreciate that we're really putting a lot of things on the table to make sure that we are doing everything we can to make sure that we're producing housing at levels that are really needed in the community and needed to address the housing cost prices out there. So those are just a couple of statistics that I do think kind of paint the picture of the need for additional housing in the city. And I hope that we can continue this discussion in future subcommittees and through the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Greenwater. Anything further? Other questions, Ms. Ford, Jim?
No, I think we just wanted to put it on the table that we'd like the city to be able to have more data that's specific to the city of Lowell. Because I think all the surrounding communities, there's an affordable housing that they want every community to meet their affordable housing by 10%. And Lowell always exceeds that. So I'm curious on where, where we might be failing. So having statistics in the city of Lowell to support any kind of initiative, I think needs to be supported by data. And also I think in the surrounding communities as a collaborative, that if every community should be 10% of affordable housing and they haven't met that, I think it's a regional issue as well. So I think maybe we could also reach out regionally and find out where else we could help those people in need. Some people might not want to move out of their community. And I just think it needs, we need to have data for the city of Lowell. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Other questions, other comments? No, I'm going to go to Jared. I'm sorry. Let's go. It looks like you're unmuted, but I can't, I can't hear you.
I feel for him.
Can you hear me now? Yes. Great. You never know with Zoom how, how it's going to work. So I, I feel for you, Deb, that it's definitely, every meeting to meeting, it's always different. I think Eric went through very well the list of possible ideas that we had that could lead to increased housing production in the city. I'd just add that in the time that I've worked for the city, you know, I've been responsible for reviewing all building permits that implicate zoning as well as helping shepherd projects through the planning board, zoning board, conservation commission. And the vast majority of projects that are leading to the creation of new homes, whether single families or anything beyond a single family, has ultimately required to go before the zoning board or the planning board for one reason or another. So it is, can be challenging in the city today to increase housing as of right when everything needs to go before the planning board or the zoning board. So it is an area to think about, you know, are there, if there is truly a housing need, what is the type of need as, as Deb mentioned? What specific types of units and what are some of the ways you can tweak the code to potentially allow more housing to be built? To get us closer to that, maybe that 300 number, if that's the correct number that Pastor Drinkwater mentioned. But there are more research that we have to do, more work we have to do, of course, to come up with that.
Good. That seems to be the consensus here. Councilor Chow, member of the subcommittee, any, any thoughts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Slagle, for the detailed report. There's a lot to digest in, in one meeting, of course, with all the different criteria of zoning throughout different neighborhoods and throughout the city. And from a, you know, just observation and through a social point and for many residents who have lived in the city all their lives. You know, we all feel, and this is hearing from other residents and other members of the community, there, there's a pressure for, for, for housing, you know, affordable housing. And not just about in terms of affordability, also quality of the, of the living situation. You know, some families, they could be working very hard to income owners, but low income owners due to demographics, education, so forth. And as Mr. Slagle mentioned earlier, you know, a city like Lowell, this is an immigration city and also a college town, not that we put so much weight into the college students because, you know, they may or may not decide to leave the city. But definitely we need to take care of our residents, families that have been living here. Not just one generation, but multi-generations. And they have not been able to move up the ladder of, of housing. And I understand that as the population increase, you know, pressure for the city. But at the same time, we really need to balance it with the integrity and the character of neighborhoods. And as, you know, there's some leverage that zoning board and the inspection service and can have control and rezoning and the city council can do. But I would imagine there's some neighborhoods throughout the city that might be categorized as historical. How that would fit in? What did go, you know, do we have any say in neighborhoods that are classified as, as historical in those areas that, you know, big a lot size and, and so forth? So these are the things that we just need to look at different angles of how we can really balance, you know, the integrity, the character of a neighborhood, quality of living, and also just to have other low-income families. You have, you know, lack of better wood, good housing as well, not in terms of affordability. So that's why, you know, I understand that the motion maker came up with this motion for us to explore, to explore different methods. And of course, we have to respect different neighborhoods again. And obviously, we would need to have meetings with different neighborhood leaders group to see what each neighborhood would like to see or can do to accommodate, really, this, this pressing needs for, for all the residents in the city. So I'm looking forward to the report and maybe discuss different recommendations one by one. Because each category that Mr. Slagle mentioned, that in itself is, would take like hours just for us to digest, to understand. And I'm sure as many people, they will have different opinions and different take of each one. And obviously, you know, we agree with Ms. Borgione. We need to get some specific data for the city. In addition to what the chairman suggested, the Merrimack Valley Housing Partnership, maybe talk to other different nonprofits that deal with housing issues like the Lowell Housing Authority, maybe get a director involved in discussing this matter. So a, a lot to discuss and hopefully we can have, we can come to some kind of agreement that we can maintain again the integrity with the neighborhoods and also have the, you know, families that are struggling to have good housing. Thank you.
And anything else, Councilor Mercy, Councilor Greenwater, Councilor Rock? Councilor Mercy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Chairman. I just want to reiterate what I've said in the past and tell you about a major factor, in my opinion. We, we know that we're 26 miles away from Boston. You know that the big cities, you make more money. People work in Boston, but they probably can't afford to live there. So what they do is they take public transportation, but they pick a city like Lowell and they live here. They can afford the big bucks that our regular people in the city can't afford. But because they work in Boston, they can afford that. So it's making it very hard for the people that are everyday people that live here. And that's another reason that we're having a hard time with that. This is what I've always felt. I don't know if it's that prevalent today, but I think it's a factor that plays into that when we talk about, can you afford a place to live? Yeah, they can afford like a block or a, they can't afford the better places because the rents are so high. Landlords know that they can get the money, so they raise it higher. So it's very tough. It's a very tough situation and we do need more housing. There's no doubt about it. Then there's the other hand, and on the other hand, you see a lot of the people that Then there's the other hand, and on the other hand, you see a lot of the people that are homeless, they're homeless because of mental illness or drugs. They should be off the street. We have nothing for them. So it's a it's a tough situation when we refer to homelessness and affordable housing and things of that nature, but that these are the things that I just wanted to bring up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor. Further discussion, maker of the motion, Councilor Rock?
Yeah, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think today was productive. I I do, I also like the fact that that Ms. Fordgioli mentioned the regional aspect as well. I know that Eric's mentioned the governor's plan to, you know, statewide, so it's not just something that Lowell was dealing with. And I think that today was a was a was a good start. And you'll look forward to, hopefully, when we're back in chambers and being able to talk about some more, maybe. So with that, just, you know, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for calling the meeting, and Eric for for the report and everybody participating. Thank you very much.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think it was, you know, the motion was referred to the subcommittee, and it's taking a big bite to to address clearly an issue for the folks that are looking for affordable housing. Eric, in your next, I'm not sure if we need a motion or not, but, you know, moving forward, this is just the first of many meetings. Perhaps we can, I guess, I would also like to know what is the? A little bit of maybe an inventory, if you will? What are the number of Section 8 housing, including the Lowell Housing Authority? And I know that we've received this in the past, but maybe updating information. What is our housing stock? Renting versus homeownership, perhaps Section 8? Both certificate and and other housing? I think it'd be good to have a good snapshot of the city's housing, homeownership and rental. I think that would be helpful moving forward, as well as options that you and your staff have been talking about, which is practical. Just trying to forward the next step for the next meeting, getting information, getting the data for the neighborhood groups, and then going out to the neighborhood groups might, you know, certainly might be part of the plan, short-term plan versus long-term. So I think there's a lot that has to be done. Madam Manager, any any closing thoughts on how to proceed?
All right, Mr. Chairman, I think you've you've, you know, mentioned the the top points. You know, this is a very big topic, obviously, and one that that I I agree. I think there's a lot of information and education that has to go both ways between, you know, the administration, council, and our neighborhoods. Zoning is a very tough issue and and one you want to get right. And so I think, you know, we 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 kind of saw a smorgasbord tonight from Mr. Slagel of of many different tools or possibilities. They may not all be right, but I think it's it warrants investigation by the council, and so we will come forward with a report. Maybe what we can do, Mr. Slagel, is is, you know, kind of put our heads together and come up with what the first phase in terms of information for the council. And then I do agree, I think, making sure it be discussed at the neighborhood levels is is very important. As I said, it's a balancing act. We want to achieve, you know, affordable housing, but we also want to maintain, you know, the integrity of the neighborhoods and and respect for the density issue and having it appropriate. So no easy answer, but one that I think is, the timing is right to to undertake it, knowing that it's going to be a a big a big discussion in in the months and weeks to come.
Okay. No, and just on a personal, I know we have some neighborhoods that are very, very densely populated to the point where perhaps, you know, some of those zones may not, they shouldn't be changed, however. I will say the downtown, certainly the Hamilton Canal, we have two development projects. There there are sections of the city where, including the downtown, where we we want mixed use, in my opinion. We want people to live downtown because we want people downtown to support the downtown. So I I do think it makes sense, and it is a balance. So any closing thoughts? We're up against the, I think, about five more minutes left. I I think this was a good meeting, and, you know, when once we have more information, we'll schedule another zoning subcommittee, and I'll brief Councilor Noon as well in the future on on the status and what the next next steps are. So if there's no other comments, no other thoughts, it's a motion to adjourn by Councilor Chow, second by myself. We'll schedule another meeting in the near future, so motion to motion to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and the opposed, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you, everybody. We'll bring this forward. At the council meeting.